Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals. It is August 25, 2020, at 7:00 PM. And we are in meeting room number one in the Carver Town Hall. We have some administrative matters with which to begin before we get to our public hearing this evening. First, we have minutes from our last meeting that need to be approved. So I ask the board members, and we are four tonight instead of our usual five, and I'll address that just before we begin our public hearing. I want to ask the four of us or the other three of you who are here with me if you've had an opportunity to review those minutes from August 25. Not August 25, June 24. Excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
I'm good.
So everybody is good?
Motion to accept the minutes as written for June 24, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Anybody want to make any changes, amendments, or modifications? I see everybody indicating in the negative, so I ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
So those minutes from June 24, our last meeting, are now accepted. Next, we have reorganization. It is time for us to decide who's going to be the chair for the upcoming year and the vice chair. Now, again, I observe that there are only four of us here tonight, so we may want to postpone this until we have our full board with us.
I think that would be a great idea.
You think that's a good idea?
Yeah. I think it's unfair to the members that are not here.
Well, we have one-
Not that we're going to vote for them anyway, but, you know, just in case.
We have one member, one regular member, ladies and gentlemen, who is not here tonight. She's indisposed. So we will wait for her return, and I expect that we will be meeting again in approximately 30 days because we have some cases in the queue that are coming up that we will have to address the next time. So we will... Let's take a vote on tabling reorganization until we have all five voting members with us. Do I hear a motion?
I want that to be a motion.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that will be carried over to our next meeting. Next, we have a public hearing that is on our docket for tonight. That's case number 52-1. And before I open that public hearing, is Kim Dougherty here. Hi, Kim. I want to tell you that, again, we are usually a board of five, but legally, we are allowed to vote with a board of four. So we have a quorum tonight, but there is an important consideration that I want to disclose to you. You may or may not know this already anyway, and if you do, then you're hearing it again. But if we are a board of five, then we can agree to provide zoning relief on a vote of four to one. It does not need to be unanimous. However, if we are only a board of four, and again, we do have a quorum with a board of four, any zoning relief that is sought, we must vote in favor of unanimously. So some petitioners who come before us with that situation decide to hedge their bets a little and wait for us to schedule our next meeting, which usually they're about a month apart. And other people say, "That's perfectly okay. We trust you folks to make the right decision. I'll go with a board of four and take my chances." So before I open that public hearing, do you have a preference, Ms. Dougherty?
I think you know there's a four.
It's hard for me to hear you.
You can go with a board of four.
Okay. All right. So let me then open the public hearing on case number 52-1. The petitioner being Kim Dougherty, who is requesting a variance pursuant to section 2300 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 3 Watson Street in Carver, which is at Assescores Map 52 Lot 1. And you are seeking a variance to side setbacks where 30 feet is required under the zoning bylaw. You're asking for relief of 18 feet because you're short. And you are looking to construct a 12 by 12-foot breezeway with an attached 24 by 24-foot garage in a residential agricultural district. All right? Good. So I ask that you come and sit in that nice padded chair right there, if you could. Bring that microphone up close to your mouth, and I see a handsome gentleman following you. No surprise there. What's your name?
Uh, Bob K.
Bob.
K. Can you hear me?
And what is your relationship to the petitioner?
Uh, second father.
Okay.
I've known her since she was in the second grade.
Okay. So you're here to support her and her petition this evening. We're happy to have you, Mr. K. All right, Kim, can you tell us a little bit about what you'd like to be doing?
So I would like to-
Could you speak into that microphone?
Yeah, bring that nice and close to your voice.
There you go.
To your mouth, I should say.
I would like to build a garage and a breezeway. And this also is my builder, so he can go into more specifics if you need that.
That's it? That's all you want to say?
She really needs more storage. She has too much.
Push that microphone over. You guys are going to have to share that one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so you know, as long as... I assume that you guys get together quite a bit, given the fact that you're related. So sitting side by side, you do not have to wear your mask if you choose not to. Wear six feet apart, so it'll be easier for everybody to hear you, perhaps, if you don't. But I don't want you to feel that you can or you can't. So it's your choice.
So, Mr. K, you were going to say something, or...
Well, I noticed when I went to her house one time, she had toys all over the yard. She had a shed that was falling down and no place to safely get from her car to her house in the pitch black or the rain. And I started talking to her about putting a garage onto her house so she could pull into the garage, shut the door, and go into the house safely.
You have provided us with a plan. Thank you for that. I'd ask the board members to pull out that plan at this time. And I want to kind of give you a little legal seminar, if you'll allow me. Variances are a curious thing. In order to grant a variance, which we as the zoning board have authority to do, we must follow Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40A. And what 40A says, among other things, is that in order to grant that variance, which is actually a breaking of the local Carver law, we must be able to demonstrate through your testimony and through your evidence that there's something unusual about the shape, the topography, or the-
Soil.
Soil, excuse me. I just blanked out. The shape, soil, or topography of the lot that's different than the other lots that surround you, that makes your piece of property distinctive. So before we get into whether this is a good idea and the design, what can you tell us about your property that would allow us, under state law, which we must follow, to grant you this variance? What is distinctive, in other words, about your property insofar as soil topography or shape is concerned?
There's not much difference about the soil that I can see.
Okay.
What caught my eye, just looking at her house, it's a ranch-style house, and there's no closets in it. It's kind of tunnel-y, small windows, small doors, crowded. Some of her kitchen appliances are in her cellar stairway. Canned goods in her cellar stairway. She doesn't have big enough space to raise this family. So that was, again, part of our subject to-
I'm not suggesting in any way, shape, manner, or form, Mr. K, I'm not suggesting that what she would like to do, what you would like to do, Kim, is not well-intentioned. It's just that we must require, must follow, the requirements of state law, which, again, I direct your attention to soil considerations, topography considerations, or shape considerations. Is there any other location on this lot where the garage and the breezeway could go that would not require a variance?
So the bulk of my land that I could build on is on the side that we did do the plans for.
Okay.
The other side of my home, although it looks different, if you look at it on the planes that you have, it appears that there's a lot more land on that side, but that isn't the case. My neighbor has a garage that's right there. So the-
Where is your septic?
The septic is in the backyard.
Do you have a copy of the plan with you?
No, we were told that you could have those.
I have a copy. Now, as we look at that plan, on the left side of that map, it appears, you're right, that there's a lot more land.
Right.
Could you flip the location of the breezeway in the garage and put it on the other side without requiring a variance?
No, because on this other side, while it looks as though there is a lot of land, there actually is my neighbor's garage.
Your neighbor's garage is not on your land. It's just close to your boundary, right?
It's very, very close. It's very close. So I have a fence. My fence is actually in, not at my lot line, but in it more. And then their garage is really close to that, to my fence, and their shed.
Mr. Mueller, who is very good with dimensions and has a mathematical brain, which I don't, is going over your map.
So here's the garage side where they're proposing the addition is 46 feet from the current house to the property line. The left side of the property is only 38 feet from property line to the existing home.
Okay. So you would require a variance on either side? Is that what you're saying? She would require a variance on either side? Okay. So flipping it doesn't necessarily obviate the need for a variance in this case. It seems like either way, you're going to need one. Now, we have to frame your argument in a way that allows us to grant the variance. Mr. K, you've already said there's nothing distinctive about the soil that would require that it be sited on that side as opposed to any other location on the lot. But you said the septic is in the back, right?
Center of the house and back, yeah.
The what?
Center of the house, back wall.
Septic. I'm talking about the septic.
Oh, my.
The septic is in the back.
Yeah. Couldn't go any further back. Would be into a future septic, future planes. The septic is back far enough so that this garage and breezeway is nowhere near it, even for the construction equipment. Plans that I've had, they show a few different futures, you know, and we would be on top of one of the futures.
Is that existing well in use that's on the left side of the property?
Yes.
Do the utilities also come on that left side?
Utility, yes. Gas is on the other side.
Underground, I suppose?
I don't know about the rest of the board members, but I see nothing distinctive here with regard to shape.
Well, it does kick back at a weird angle, and there is a lot of room between that proposed garage and the abutter on the right side. There is no room between the house and the abutter on the left side. Looks like he would have needed a variance to build his garage, too.
Unless he was grandfather.
Looks like it's right there, you know, our grandfather.
And they can't put it in the back where they would have-
Septic is in the back.
Side.
Right. And the well is in the left front.
Along with the gas.
Along with the gas.
Could you cut down the size of the breezeway and kick it over a little bit more to the house, or would that be?
I can do anything. It's a-
This is a good guy to know, then, if he can do anything.
No, just the room itself is only 12 feet.
Yeah, 12 by 12.
So if you're going to put a back door and a couple of windows-
Yeah. It's not a big space that you're planning here.
I'm trying to get some closets in there, too.
Topography is not an issue here, is it? The land is flat.
I assume you're going to cut down some trees to make this happen?
Yeah.
I have a Google thing.
So, Mr. K, I think you may have spoken too quickly when you said there's no soil Mr. Mueller, can you explain why there may be a soil issue here after all?
Yeah, you have the existing gas service that runs underground on that left side, but also the well.
Runs along the driveway, and as you're looking at the house, the gas line's on the right of the house.
Oh, okay. But either way, that well line runs up on that left side where your existing well is?
Yeah. Based on where it's placed on the map, it seems to be on the left side, front left.
The well.
Yes.
The well.
Yes.
You'd have to run over the well to get into your garage, and that's-
Right. You don't want to put your driveway over your well, where your well line.
And you have the septic in the back, right?
Yeah. The existing driveway, as you're looking at the house, as you're looking at this map, is to the right of the house where the dotted lines are.
And where's that gas line in relation to that driveway on the map? Is that where the dotted lines are?
Right along the left.
On the left side.
Line, yeah.
So you wouldn't be touching, you wouldn't be anywhere near that gas line?
No. You can see where the fireplace is on the right side of the house?
Yep.
Between there and the existing deck, which is a solid line there, is the gas meter. So the back wall of this breezeway is actually indicated incorrectly. It'll be four feet off the back of the house, and even with the back of the garage.
Gotcha.
Just to move that section away from the gas.
Yeah.
Where's the gas again?
Gas line runs along this dotted line.
Okay.
And then the meter's right here by the chimney. This is actually out of, this belongs back here, even with this, and this would kick back more, because that's where the meter is. If I think I understand what you're saying.
The back wall of the garage is the back wall of the breezeway.
That makes the most sense.
So if you follow our meandering discussions here, it would appear that there may, in fact, be a soil issue. And you might not think of a septic or a well to be related to soil, but in zoning, it is. Because, Kim, you are not able to place the garage, assuming that you even wanted to, in the back, because you have the septic back there. And on the left side, when I was asking about flipping, I know that it would be tight to your neighbor's yard, but you have a well there with the lines going back more to the left side of the house than to the right. So I'm satisfied, speaking from myself only, not the rest of these guys who have their own independent way of looking at things, but I'm satisfied that the state requirement is satisfied here. And I'm also satisfied that, you know, if you tried to do it any way, any other way, it would involve substantial financial hardship to you, because you'd probably have to dig up the septic or dig up the well or, you know, go through all sorts of gyrations to get it on the other side as opposed to the side where you have it. And even if you move it to the other side, you'd still require a variance, anyway.
More intrusive.
Larger variance.
A larger variance. I also am of the opinion that granting a variance in this case would not cause any detriment to the public good, and that's another requirement under state law. And finally, I find that a variance could be granted in this case without taking away from the intent or purpose of the bylaws of the town of Carver, because you still have 12 feet, I think, right? Even after you do the proposed construction, you still have 12 feet, which is probably more than-
18.
18 feet, excuse me, which is more than what you'd have if you flipped it and put it on the other side.
That's right.
So I'm of the opinion that your application satisfies all of the state requirements for variance criteria. So say yay. But we have some questions about the style, the height, the design, so allow me to back up for a minute and have the other board members ask any questions that they might have about those issues.
Okay. Do you want to just add?
I know exactly what you're going to ask. So go ahead, you go ahead.
All right. You said that the style of your house is a ranch. What is the style of the proposed garage? Is it one-story or two?
Just one.
It's one-story, similar to the style of the house?
Yeah. I don't like to create too many different roof lines. So the roof line of the house is going to stop. The garage is a six pitch. It's not very tall. It's almost the same height. It's going to be the same angle as the house is. So you see the house roof, breezeway roof, and the garage roof. Gables are this way on the garage.
Yep.
So nothing kind of odd-looking, no.
Franny's trying to ask if you're putting a full second story with a kitchen and a bedroom. That's what she wants to-
You're not going to let anybody up there?
So it's going to be a small attic space like you have in your house for storage?
Probably this high to the peak of the roof.
Perfect. And no water in there? Electricity? Yes. No heat?
No.
Okay. I'm good.
Jermaine?
Saves me the trouble, she asks the same things I was going to ask. I may not have asked about the heat, because I'm really spoiled in my old age, so I would heat my garage and I would probably air-condition it also. But, that being said, where's the water spigot for outside for washing your car and stuff like that? Are you going to extend that to the garage till you'll have an outside faucet?
They're kind of in the middle of the front and the back, so it's just teed off.
Do you see trying to bring that out and have a spigot out at the garage doors? The reason I ask that is because Ms. Mellow said no water, so I'm wanting-
No, like, the pipes under the driveway and the concrete on the garage.
Okay.
I wouldn't, it's not worth it. Just carry the clothes on the house.
Didn't want to have that be an order of conditions, and then suddenly you change your mind and, you know. I'm fine. Chairman's writing. It's a good sign.
We write all of our own decisions, so I have to be careful about taking notes. And the measurement of 18 feet, or, let's say, reverse that again?
They needed 12 feet.
12 feet. That measurement is accurate?
Yeah, well, it's going off a certified plan by Mr. Borden, which was recently done, so.
Okay.
Father said he needs 12 feet. He needs 12 feet.
Yep.
That's accurate. Any abutters, Mr. Jim?
I observe that there are members of the public here tonight. Would anybody like to speak in favor or opposition, or just have a question or two?
You went in favor.
Yeah, poor girl. This is Paul Gail Shieh.
Why don't you identify yourselves for the record? I know who you are, but if you could, please, just state your name and address.
I'm Gail Shieh, 1 Watson Street. This is my husband, Paul Shieh, also Watson Street, 1 Watson Street.
And you both indicate that you're in favor of this proposal tonight, right?
It'd be great for her.
Yes.
So I understand you're Lot 48. Would that be correct?
I-
You're on-
We're 1 Watson Street.
You're on this side?
Yes.
And I observe another gentleman with a Zorro mask on over there. Your name?
I'm Andrew Kellogg. I'm at 6 Watson Street, and I'm in favor of this.
Very good. Thank you. Very good.
And in that case, I think if you're prepared, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this public hearing is closed, and-
You want to frame the wording?
Yes, I'm going to frame the wording for Ms. DeCarly. I suggest that the following motion be made. That the board finds that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, and/or topography of the structures or lot, but not affecting the district generally, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner. Relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Those are the magic words from Chapter 40A state law. Ms. DeCarly, I'll give you that language at the end of this meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept that finding?
Yes. Go ahead.
You'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That finding, therefore, is made. Let's move now to the decision. I'd like for someone to make a motion to approve the request for side yard relief of 12 feet due to the soil conditions of the subject lot, all as more particularly described in the testimony that we've all heard this evening. Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a-
Variance.
-variance of 12 feet due to the soil conditions of the lot.
This is a 12-foot side yard setback.
Side yard setback.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So your variance is granted.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, you're entitled, as we see it under state law and also under local law, so congratulations. You'll be able to put all your toys away. And, Mr. K, you now have a big project.
Yep.
And when you're done over there, would you come over to my house? Thank you both.
Sharon usually explains.
Yeah, you need-
Yeah.
Doesn't happen tomorrow, so-
No. What I have to do is I have to write this decision, which will not take me a long time, although I've got some other things I need to take care of before I get to this. And after that decision is filed, and it will be filed with the town clerk, someone who may want to appeal because they feel harmed by the granting of this variance, has 20 days from the date that decision is filed in the town clerk's office. So you won't be able to commence any sort of construction or get a building permit until that 20-day period has passed from the date that it's filed with the town clerk. I also want to let you know that you should be filing the decision, after I have written it, with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. The recording of that decision is your expense. It's not an ungodly amount of money, but this helps people in your chain of title down the road, if you should ever move, understand that you had the authority to do what you did at the time, because you don't ever want to sell the house and then find that, or try to sell the house, and find that, you know, the buyer has issues with whether you could have ever built on that side lot or that side of the house as we just allowed you to. So you want that on the record. So I'll get you the decision through the town clerk's office. They'll notify you. You wait 20 days, you get your building permit, but in the meantime, you want to make sure that you get over to Plymouth and record the decision. Is that all clear?
Yes.
Very nice to meet you tonight. And, Mr. K, you, too.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Thank you.
You can keep that.
You can. Do you need a copy?
You have copy?
Oh, is that yours?
No?
I'll take it. Thank you for coming.
Is that where you have that one?
Nice to see you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump ahead on the agenda and go to item E, which is consideration of removal bond for cell tower located at 62A Winham Road, map 42, Lot 8, owned by SBA Communications Corporation, 8051 Congress Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida. There was a question raised at our last meeting about what sort of security the town should accept for possible removal of that cell tower, if that should ever happen. And my understanding is that the town administrator's office usually handles those sorts of issues because it has to do with bonding and surety, which I understand, but we don't want to overstep our jurisdiction either. So I would suggest to the board members here that the bond issue that this item raises should be referred to the town administrator's office for appropriate action. Do I hear a motion?
Sure moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that buck has been passed, the town administrator's office, which has dealt with that issue, by the way, many times in connection with all different cell phone towers throughout Carver. Next, I want to go back up to item D, which is a discussion following meeting with planner and building commissioner concerning review and procedures for cases filed, or for cases that are filed with the planning department and eventually appealed to the zoning board of appeals. And what I can tell everybody is that we, as planned, based on our discussions at the last meeting, we had that gathering about three weeks ago now, Fran? Is that about right?
Couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. And this was a meeting that we, the zoning board, had been requesting for some time, but had to be postponed because of the virus. And so we were finally able to get everybody actually in the room, in person, but for the building commissioner, who remains working from home, he attended via Zoom. Present at that meeting were yours truly and member Fran Mello, who's sitting immediately to my right, the chair of the planning board, Mr. Mackey, was there, the town administrator, Mr. LaFond was there, and a couple of ladies from the planning department were there as well. Have I gotten everybody, Fran, that was there at the meeting? So we had an opportunity, folks, to go through a number of concerning cases that have come to us over the last year, year and a half. About, I think, five or six we identified. Ms. Mello took the ball there and ran with it and mentioned all those cases to the folks who were present and asked for explanations as to what had happened with regard to certain processes and procedures that seemed to go off the rails, why letters of denial had not been filed or placed in the appropriate file, which makes our job, as you might well understand, more difficult and more challenging and also frustrating for applicants in the Town of Carver as well. So after we had some give and take about those individual cases, I had the opportunity also to express concern that bylaws be followed in accordance with their terms and not simply because a project might seem like a good idea or because we like the applicant or the Those bylaws are the laws for the Town of Carver. So we wanted to make sure that we sort of reset the clock and made everybody understand that our concern is and always has been, as a zoning board of appeals, to follow the law, wherever that law may take us. And sometimes we have to say no to petitioners who have otherwise very compelling applications. But as I explained during our public hearing tonight, there are certain state requirements by which we must abide. I think everybody who attended the meeting understood that improvements needed to be made with regard to process and procedure. And accordance with that, we undertook the drafting of a packet, if you will. It's seven pages. That will be given to all applicants who require zoning relief so that these applicants understand what their requirements are and what they must do to satisfy state law as well as local zoning bylaws. A good deal of time and energy was placed into the drafting of this packet, most especially by member and vice chair Sharon Clark, who is indisposed tonight and unfortunately not with us. I had the opportunity earlier today to distribute this packet via email to all of the members who are present tonight, and I hope they've had a chance to look through this. All of us are very familiar with this process anyway, so it's not like we're trying to understand this for the very first time. This is more for the folks who are at the window in the planning department and also for members of the town who are wading into an area that nobody really would be expected to know very much about. So I'll step back and ask the board members individually, beginning with Mr. Jermaine, whether he has any questions or comments.
I have none. It's self-explanatory. I like it. I think it protects the applicant, and I think it does, it makes our life a whole lot easier because there's a procedure.
Mr. Mueller?
Nope. Great packet, great drafting. It's streamlined, to the point, so I don't think there'd be any issues with the applicants.
I like the fact that it gives the applicants some examples of what they need before they come before us to make their claims. Because that's something, you know, first time out, you don't understand as an applicant what we're looking for or what we need.
And for that, we thank Ms. Clark, who was responsible for that page, especially in the packet.
And I think when you say someone, like even tonight, when you talk about soil conditions, they're thinking about what's different about my dirt.
Yeah.
They're not thinking about...
What might be under the dirt.
Well, where's the septic? Where's the gas line? So they don't think that that applies to a soil condition. And the example given in here is soil conditions, and it mentions that.
Yep.
So this is just an easy way to do it. I think it's a much friendlier process, so I think it's great.
I think one of the things that we found out when we met with the other departments was the fact that they do have a process in place, but the letter of denial, which we kept looking for, they did not realize over the past five years that that was part of our process. And there's been quite a few changes down there, so you can understand every time somebody new comes on, a new process starts. So just going back and looking at what their process is, which actually is pretty comprehensive, and making sure everybody's crossing the i's and dotting the t's is going to help everybody involved.
Everything needs a flow check. Makes life so much easier.
Yep.
We've said this before. We've had no denials, and yet people come before us, and it's an appeal process. You had to be told no before you come here, so.
Well, that denial letter or denial of permit or the letter that goes with it will also help us understand what they've been told.
That's right. Even this application that was offered tonight, I thought was really good.
Was better, yeah.
And I like that, you know? So you want a motion for this thing, to accept it as written?
Mr. Mueller, do you have any more comments?
I'm good.
Ms. Mello?
I like that.
Motion to adopt the seven-page document as written?
Sure moved.
Before we take a vote, I want to thank Ms. Mello for participating in that meeting, which, by the way, lasted two hours. There was a lot of material presented. And as Mr. Jermaine just pointed out, the objective here is to make things better for the residents who come in looking for this relief, whether it's a variance or a special permit. We haven't discussed special permits tonight, but that has its separate page in the packet. We have eight bylaws specific to special permits. So folks who come into the planning department will be given this packet and will then figure out whether they need a variance or a special permit. So I think we've really tried to cover all the bases. And as I said, this is as well going to give guidance to the planning department because, who was it that said, "folks come and go"? And, you know, you start over with a new person, and this is, again, a very highly technical, legalized area. So this will help them as well. Okay, I have a motion.
Can I clean that motion up a little bit, Mr. Jim?
You may.
Just to further define it, so the motion would really read, for you, Kelly, the motion would be to accept the packet that's titled Town of Carver: Instructions for Submitting a Zoning Board of Appeals Application in its entirety, this packet. Just by saying we accept the packet kind of is...
Okay, this time.
Yeah.
Do I check?
You can.
So the motion now has been amended. I need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just think it defines it so what, two years from now on, they're looking for, how was this motion made? It's not quite so ambiguous.
And I will say this in closing. This is, in my judgment, a very significant step forward. All in favor?
Aye.
So that passes, and we expect going forward that this packet will be given to all applicants seeking zoning relief. Next on the agenda is correspondence, and we really don't have any correspondence.
Good. Motion to adjourn?
So the next thing is the motion to adjourn. Before we do, however...
Well, you said we don't have any correspondence, and there's nothing happening.
But we do have cases waiting in the queue. We have four cases waiting in the queue for our next meeting. So we need to arrive at a date that works for those of us here tonight, and then I will pass that date on to the others who are not present.
Well, since Fran's the world traveler here, how are you looking for the end of September? You're going to be, you know, in Israel or, you know, what's the story?
Good for September except for the 24th.
I'd have put money.
For the 24th through the 28th. Other than that...
Nice.
We're going to stick with the Tuesday?
And we have to allow time for publication, too.
Right.
So if we need to push this to the beginning of October, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Well, she's back on the 28th. We could do the 29th, which is Tuesday.
We need her to adjust to the time change.
No, I mean, the 29th is fine, if you guys, and that is the Tuesday. So I'm only going a week.
It's six weeks.
Yeah, it's kind of pushing it.
September 29th?
Yeah.
It's six weeks?
September's a long month.
September 29th.
Okay.
So our next meeting...
22nd, which would be five weeks. It all depends on...
Twenty, we'll do the 29th unless there's an issue with that date with Ms. Clark, most especially.
Yep.
29th?
September 29th. Now, Mr. Jermaine, your motion, please.
Second.
Mr. Mueller's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.